Hi, welcome to tonight's meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee. It is July 15th and it is 6:03 and we're in the National North Boardroom. And I am here, Mr. Claffey.
Here.
And Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
And we also have Mr. Gray and Dr. Andre. And Mr. Gray, I didn't know if you would mind starting off by just telling us a little bit about what's going on, like what the status is on the grants. I know that it's not really anything. And you can't be specific about anything, but just in case anyone's watching and is wondering.
Sure, so I guess I'll kick us off and then I'll ask Dr. Andre to maybe fill in some of the gaps, just in case. So from a federal funding standpoint, for fiscal year 2024-25, which is the current school year that we technically just ended, those grants don't close until the end of September. Each grant has slightly a different, what we call, period of performance. So it's not on your traditional July 1st through June 30th. So for example, Title I will go ahead and close for the fiscal year 23, excuse me, 24-25, will close as of September 30th, I believe. So if there's any money that we have yet to spend, we are working internally to say, what are our needs assessments? And then where can we spend that money? Anything that was given to us from the state level and the federal level related to grants for prior years has been, what I would say, is encumbranced at this point. So everything was budgeted, the hypotheticals were made between salaries, benefits, supplies, et cetera, that was being purchased. I think when we look at fiscal year '26, which is now technically what we're in, it is '25-'26, we are still uncertain on some of the grants. I think Dr. Andre and I have been monitoring it with the state, as well as with the city, to figure out like what's the best plan of action. And we're getting updates every week. At this point, we have Title I funding from an allocation standpoint, but they're kind of chunking it this year. And like 40% is coming and then 60%. I think we're still, we still have uncertainties related to Title III. Do you want to jump in, Dr. Andre?
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
Go for it.
Yeah, so just for clarification, when we talk about federal funding, to Mr. Gray's point, so Title I-A, we're receiving funding. So that's our big, that's $5.2 million that we receive every year. So right now, to Mr. Gray's point, if we were receiving the same amount next year, we would get 40%, now 60% in December. That money is not being delayed. Neither is IDEA, which is $3.5 million we received last year, and pre-K, IDEA pre-K, which is around $87,000. Those funds are not being delayed right now. What is being delayed is Title I-C, which is about migrant students. We don't receive any Title I-C dollars, so we're not impacted by that. The areas that we are waiting upon is Title II-A, which is around professional development. That's where we have some possible instructional coaches. We have one or two positions in there, but it's mostly around professional development, and that's roughly around $700,000. Title III, which is ELL students, that's about $250,000. Title IV-A, that's about $585,000 we received last year. And that's to support three main areas. It's social-emotional well-being, it's innovation and using technology, and well-rounded students. So that's how that money is used. And then the last area that is delayed is Title IV-B, and that's a lot of our 21st century programming. So the delay and the impact in Nashville is Title II-A, Title III, Title IV-A and B. And that's what we're waiting for further guidance on. So, but IDEA and Title I-A has been released or allocated at this point.
I think the only other thing to mention, based off of what Dr. Andre had just provided, plus I know he had given an update related to a couple questions that came in over a funding over the last week or so. What we've heard from the state level is that funding can be expected to kind of be flatlined when you compare prior year to current year. I think that's been pretty true, looking at what we received for IDEA and Title I. They're slightly lower than last year. So to Dr. Andre's point, we're hopeful that this is going to continue to move forward and we'll have more updates. But we've been communicating, like I said, with the city, in case there is any support we might need.
The last tidbit is that I'm also, I've reached out for legal advice on possible steps, especially if we decide as a board, as a city, to use other funding sources to offset a decrease in federal funds, what's the long-term implication of that? So currently, if we take a position, money out of a federal fund, put it into operating, and then try to put it back into federal funds in future years, that's not allowable. So in this interim, in the delay, say, maybe, you know, we want to put the $2.5 million that's kind of held up right now into operating funds, we may or may not be able to put that back into federal funds in the future. I don't want to jeopardize that. So we're looking for some...
The mic is going on and off. So we're just looking for some legal advice on what's allowable as well, or even if, you know, the city gave us a supplemental, is that a good thing or a bad thing? If that puts in jeopardy future funding, federal funds, if we try to do something in the short term? So again, I've reached out to our legal counsel on some ways to proceed as well.
Okay. Mainly, I'm just wondering now about the money for the ELL programs. If that doesn't come through, what will that do to our ELL program?
So the law is still there, we'll still be obligated to meet those needs and those requirements. And so that's, again, a conversation where we would look at reprioritizing of what could we do locally? You know, I hate to say it this way, because every dollar is really important, but we will look at, you know, that's $250,000 as opposed to $4.2 million.
Yeah.
Right, so that might be, and in the $250,000, what's in Title III, there's a lot of after-school tutoring supports, there's some professional development in there. There may be one or two family engagement coordinators. So it's, I hate, $250,000 is a lot of money, but going in as, in July, you know, 14th, there might be some flexibility in the operating budget that we could absorb if we thought it was important. However, I don't want to jeopardize not receiving Title III funds in the future.
Because if you find the money somewhere else, then they're not going to give it to you.
Right, or we have to do something else, right?
Okay. All right, that sounds good, thank you. Do you guys have any other questions about any of the programs that are affected? Do you?
Not a question, but a comment. And we know how important 21st Century is to the Nashville School District, so I'm really looking forward to seeing what happens with that and see how we can maintain that, because it is so helpful. It does so much for our kids, so, like...
Yeah, okay. All right. We'll continue to keep you guys posted, for sure, on any updates.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If we're good, we'll go ahead and jump in to the first agenda item. So the first thing before you is actually a request from the Special Ed Department. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Andre to just add a little bit of clarity related to the social-emotional and behavioral programming that we're looking to go ahead and move forward with a contract on.
So before I give any background, I don't know if you need a recommendation or second and then open it up for a discussion, or you want me to give some background first?
You can give the background first.
So essentially, what we're looking at with this program is really starting to reshape the conversations of our special education program. What we're looking at is providing more support for our project achievement classes as a pilot at Broad Street. So we're noticing, through our data, the restraints, seclusion reports, that we need some job-embedded professional development and really evaluate how we do provide services, especially at Broad Street. Year one, this is where it would start out. This service provider would work with our teachers, with our administration, to provide or reshape the way that we're running project achievement. That's been a conversation for a number of years. We're looking for a partner to provide that job-embedded professional development, in-class support, and really help us with the social-emotional behavioral program, especially at our project achievement classes. So right now, it's at Broad Street, but this can expand to Birch Hill, McCarthy, and other programs. But we, through our research, and with a recommendation for ESS, Effective School Solutions, we've seen, we've visited other schools where they're working and received testimony from their building principals and other teachers on how well it is shaping the culture of that school and providing in-class supports. I say "in-class" of the project achievement for the kids to actually be successful transitioning back into regular ed classrooms, too. So over the years, we've had conversations around the BOE on the number of restraints and seclusions and making improvements to our project achievement. This is a step in that direction, providing intensive support for our adults so that we can actually provide high-quality or special education services for the students in those classrooms.
So, oh, sorry. Regan, I think the only other thing I would add is, we did go out for an RFP related to this request. That's why on the memo in front of you, there are three proposals that we received. One was pretty drastic, at $1.2 million. ESS, or Effective School Solutions, which is the one we're proposing that we move forward with, came in at $500,000 over the course of two years. And then the third one came in just under $100,000 for the course of a two-year agreement. Based off of reviewing the bids, it didn't seem like that one really solidified what we were looking to move forward with, from a costing standpoint, either.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering why they were so different, the amounts were so different. It was just because they were all offering different things, I suppose, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Now, you said that this is, are these, there's people that are coming. It said, where is it? Like a, you have all these notes now, I don't know. Mental health tech and clinician cohort?
Correct, yep.
And they're just going to work with the Broad Street, I mean, not with the Broad Street, with the project achievement kids and their parents?
Yes, at Broad Street.
Okay. And now I saw that they're going to be offering group therapy, family therapy, and parent caregiver support group?
Yep.
This all seems like really, really great. Now, is it, how many, what is the percentage of kids over there that are in project achievement? And are there any other programs over there that, I mean, could possibly benefit for us that won't be getting it?
So it's two classrooms, it's roughly around 20 to 25 students.
Okay.
And so, again, I think there's an aspect of, could it benefit more students? I think there's a ripple effect. But really, how do we support the students in project achievement? And we've talked to other, again, administrators, where you don't want to start too big, because it is going to be a culture shift, right? It's another outside service provider coming in, working in a classroom, setting up different expectations, social-emotional behavioral support. So there's going to be a lot of uploading at the beginning of the year. If it's too spread out, then we're afraid that it might get watered down. So how do we ensure that we're going to be successful in two classrooms? And then spread that out at Birch following years, as we get that data to say that we're successful. I do think we will see a ripple effect impacting other classrooms. Most of the project achievement students at Broad Street are in regular ed settings for a good part of the day. So they're not solely self-contained. So I think some of the programming will go into a fourth-grade class or a fifth-grade class, and how are they working with students in those classrooms? I do review all the restraints and seclusions across the district, and I can say there's definitely a pattern of where behaviors start, right? And then what are those antecedents? And some of it is, you know, a student who's dysregulated, who's a project achievement student dysregulated in a fourth-grade classroom.
Yeah.
So if ESS, if we award their bid tonight, how are they working with that fourth-grade teacher or to actually run that classroom so that everyone is successful? So I think even though it's two classrooms, it will impact the 250 students at Broad Street.
I think it sounds like a really great idea. I'm glad that you're trying to address the issues that we brought up. I hope that you'll let us know how it goes as the school year goes. And I was wondering about the financing, it's different than what we usually see. I don't know if you guys could talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so you can see in the memo, part of it, and we've had this conversation in the past, right? So we know there's currently a number of unfilled positions that we can't find every year, especially school psychologists. So we'll be diverting some of the unfilled positions for one school psychologist, because in the proposal, they're providing clinical support, which would offset that unfilled position, so it's a transfer. And then the other aspect is transferring money of two unfilled school psychologist positions, interns?
Yeah.
And so we would use that money to fund this, offset the cost of this grant, too. So again, we're, how do we better utilize unfilled positions so that we can actually provide those services?
Can you tell us how long it's been since these positions have been filled?
Years.
Multiple years, huh?
Multiple years.
Okay.
And I think we saw that last month, when we came forward to the Finance and Operations Team, plus the broader board. Remember, we're signing an agreement with White Birch to provide some school psychologists? So when we were here last month as a district, I believe there were nine open positions. And on average, over the last three to five years, we've seen that be anywhere from five positions all the way up to 11 positions, which is the reason we're comfortable moving the two interns and the one position. The other thing, just to piggyback off of the funding sources, so there's a position within IDEA, which is a special education grant. You know, when we had talked to the special education team, we basically said, from a funding standpoint, if this is something we are proposing, like how are we going to fund it, right? Because we can't go ahead and just add $250,000 into the operating budget. So it is going to be a mix between operating budget and grant funding in order to support the costs for the next two years.
And I saw that you can, they can claim, if the kids have insurance or Medicaid, they can try and claim that and get paid through them. Would that affect our costs at all, or would that just be something extra for them? I mean...
So we would get the reimbursable. So we would fill out the Medicaid, and then it would go back as a revenue back to the city.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. And so the job titles, the mental health tech and the clinician cohort, are they certified and stuff to work with this population?
Yes.
Okay.
And ESS is responsible for filling those positions.
Excellent, okay. All right, do you guys have any questions? Okay. Okay.
You can go first.
If the director of special ed position is not filled, do you foresee problems with implementing this?
No.
Okay, let me, won't you have problems?
No, I think we're having an internal conversation on how do we fill the leadership void. So we'll be coming forward with that. So I think we'll be, we'll be okay.
I know that there was a good support staff for our special ed director, so I'm curious to see what happens with that. Okay, sure.
So, absolutely love it. I love, is a creative use for the $250,000. I just have a couple questions. And my first one is, why Broad Street when we promised all this at McCarthy?
So this is elementary school? So they're addressing elementary students?
Absolutely, same, same thing. Like, I understand, but we had to go out for these RFPs, and this is things that we had promised for McCarthy. So I was wondering why we didn't focus there, even though McCarthy is a middle school. I do understand the difference in Broad Street and the project achievement. But why not? Why are we creating another program at Broad Street? I love the program, I think that it's positive, that it's something that we should be doing. It's not a negative, how I'm presenting it. I'm just wondering why we promised these things at McCarthy when we built McCarthy? So I'm wondering why we're creating them at Broad Street for 20 to 25 kids? That is very important that we have it. I love clinicians, I love the mental health techs, I love the creative use of the money. But I'm wondering why our focus never got to that?
So, just for clarification, so we have approximately 12 intensive needs classrooms at the elementary level for years. So this isn't, Broad Street's not a new classroom. Project Achievement has been around for a number of years. So McCarthy's programs also have been around for a number of years. We consolidated some of the middle school programs to all go to McCarthy. So this program is addressing elementary students, not middle school. But this isn't new, so Project Achievement, again, has been around for years. So what we're noticing, just for data-wise, so we have approximately 120 students who are in intensive needs classrooms at the elementary level. The data is showing that they need a level of intensive support for how do we grow the capacity of those educators, and what PD they need. So that's where this is coming from. This past year, there was an additional hundreds referrals, 100 student referrals for an additional 100 kids into intensive needs classrooms. So that would be 220 kids in self-contained classes at the elementary level. That's where our bigger need is right now. Last year at McCarthy, if we recall, we had the conversation about outside providers coming in. So we have Applied ABC already at the middle school, providing services and outside resources for our middle-school-age kids. So that contract will continue. And if you recall, we talked about an alternative school, a school within a school, we had that special application. That's still kind of moving forward. But right now, we're seeing a huge need of addressing how are we providing high-quality special education at the elementary level, especially K through 3, around social, emotional, and behavioral supports. So that's why there's programs coming to the elementary and not middle school.
It will be really great. I know that a lot of times, kids that have a lot of serious disabilities or issues or whatever, IEPs, that it is in those early grades that they end up having to leave the district because we can't provide what they need.
Yep.
So the idea of helping that age level, it makes sense to me. So it would be nice if we had less kids leave the district.
Yep. So I think this is a way, again, as a district, to be proactive. Yeah, and I'm sorry if I didn't answer the question completely, but that's where this being an elementary is, that we're seeing greater need there right now, as opposed to, and this is a logic conversation, like if we're moving, are we moving all of our special needs programs to McCarthy? Is that, like, is that the intent, right? And so are we having little K students in what the eighth grade is? I don't think that's the intent of the question, either.
So, no, that wasn't the intent of the question. The question is, I love, I love the ideas of the program. I love that there's going to be a clinician on site, that they're going to get 12 professional hours of training. I love that there's going to be a mental health tech there. I'm loving that Project Achievement is going to get this. Thank you for bringing it to them. I'm saying that we haven't seen this over to McCarthy. I know that we have Applied ABA, but we had talked about doing these types of things, bringing in the clinicians, being able to support the children in this way. And we did, not that I'm trying to mix K through 12 or whatever, but we did get licensed for that. We did ask for that. So, like, I'm just asking, do you have an idea of bringing this to McCarthy at any time?
So if it's successful, so some of the data with Applied ABC, and this might be, we're actually meeting with our special education interim administrators right now, our internal team, who just had a conversation with Applied ABC to see if that worked, what's the results, and then making recommendations to provide support to McCarthy. So that's going to continue. With a little foreshadowing, the data is not what we expected, and we might have to go in a different direction with a different service provider, but that would be a conversation within the next couple months. But that's still in place.
And I think...
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. I was just going to say, I think to Dr. Andre's point, what we've heard from the administration side is, there's definitely a need at the elementary level, right? And there's more needs at the middle school and high school levels, too. But based off of the increase of elementary students being referred, this really would be a good program to go ahead and start at Broad Street at the elementary level next year. And if it continues to be successful, we probably would come forward to go ahead and expand it to either the other schools and/or maybe the other grade levels.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing it to the district. I do love the program and know how important it is. Just was wondering.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no other questions, I'm going to make the motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve the two-year contract with Effective School Solutions for development, implementation, and evaluation of social, emotional, and behavioral programming in an amount not to exceed $500,000 over the next two years.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that passes, thanks, guys.
Okay. All right, so next topic, and I think Dr. Andre and I are going to tag-team these together. So we have a list of six contracts that are up for renewal. A lot of these are standard contracts that come forward to finance and operations, and then the broader board every single year. So we'll kind of just go one by one to start. So the first one being Booth Bay Therapy Services. This is $37,800 for fiscal school year 2025 through 2026. We do go ahead and pay for these services. We do go ahead and pay for these services directly out of the IDEA grant. And we're looking for a motion to go ahead and continue with Booth Bay. All right, I'll do all of them unless you want me to pause, so feel free to interrupt.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I looked at the contracts from last year and I noticed that the last year was actually more expensive for most of them than this year. And I was just wondering why. Like last year, the Booth Bay was $43,200 and this year it's only $37,800. I was just surprised because usually you see, it goes in the other direction. I was like, wait a minute, what year is this? So I don't know if they're providing different services or less services and if that's dependent on kids' needs or what.
So my understanding from the special ed team is, yes, you're correct in saying usually year over year, you would expect to see some type of increase. I think it's based off of the students' needs that we currently have. Again, snapshot in time of what we're anticipating these services to be for the 25, 26 school year.
If I could just add to that, I think there's some leadership of Mr. Gray's not giving herself enough credit. I also think the special education staff that we had with a former director and our current leadership team are really questioning and having conversations with our outside service providers to make sure that they're sharpening their pencils, to make sure we continue the partnership. So I think there's been a couple tougher conversations of we're not paying for things that you had in the contract. We didn't utilize it, take it out of the contract. So there has been a little pencil sharpening all around. And I think it's, you know, Mr. Gray and several administrators have been having those conversations with our service providers.
That's great, thanks for all your hard work.
I keep saying, just because we paid a price last year doesn't mean we have to pay the same, right? We shouldn't automatically just say yes to 3%, 3.5%, 4% increase. We really should be providing the services that the students need.
That is a good question. Page three of the contract, I don't know, did Mr. Donovan come back? You just got to fix that, right?
Yes, I did see those.
Not a big deal.
He did not. There are, there are a couple, I think, from prior year's contracts, based off of the timing. He had signed most of these. So yes, they do need to update it to my contact information.
Good eye.
I gotta read something. And I gotta believe it's Booth B., because there's no A in there, right? Unless there's a typo, but.
All right, so the next one for audiology services for our hearing impaired students, we're looking to go ahead and spend up to $22,230. And again, this is going to come directly from the IDEA grant for fiscal year 25, 26. Next one for Leap Learning LLC. So this will go ahead and cover up to $162,000. This will come directly out of our operating budget, out of contract services. The next, actually, the next four are all coming directly out of the operating budget, out of contract services. Throughout the budget process, the team did anticipate some of these costs would be coming forward. So we have already budgeted for that. We're just looking for the approval to spend related to the couple of different services. And as mentioned, last month, there were several positions that were still open related to our school psychologist. So that is why you're seeing a couple of different requests coming forward. Each contract is individual based off of the individual we are hiring.
I'm just wondering, are the services provided by Regional Services and Education Center a lot different than the services that are provided by White Birch? Like these women, other people that are here, will they be working in different age groups or different population or?
My understanding is it's similar work. These are some individuals that we've had year over year, based off of the needs of the school psychologists, based off of us unfortunately not being able to just find that talent on the market. I think the consistency to bring these individuals back is definitely a benefit. Between them and White Birch, it will be a K through 12 service. So I think between them and White Birch, plus some of the staff that we have hired, I think the school psychologist services, for the most part, will be filled, knock on wood, unless something happens.
These will say they're going to partially cover. Does that mean that they're not going to be here full-time Monday through Friday?
So a lot of the contracts, usually they're here Monday through Thursday or they're here four days a week, depending on the needs. Okay, all right, thanks. Do you guys have any questions? Nothing? All right, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, it's all one motion.
No, don't you have to, you're not going to go over the other?
Do you, do you want to read all them? She did.
No. I just thought, did you, so you're done?
She read them all. I'm done. Okay.
I don't know why, I thought there were a few left.
It's okay.
Well, she. We lumped all the regional services into one. Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I wanted to thank whoever set it up this way because this is really, really convenient, makes for a much shorter meeting. Because there would be a lot of motions if it wasn't like this.
Utara and the support staff.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the special education contract listed on the Finance and Ops memo dated July 15th, 2025, under their corresponding accounts.
Second motion.
Thank you. And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Ms. Lampier, just, I think, just, it goes into HR as well, but you could see the amount of these contracts of what individuals are getting. So like, some of these individuals have been with us five, 10, 15 years plus.
I recognize some of the names from the paperwork from last year. So that was pretty cool.
But if you equate that and try to recruit a school psychologist on a teacher's salary, right? So instead of making, you know, there's, again, the comprehensive package, but if we're looking for a school psychologist who has five years' experience on the teacher's salary scale, that's around $55,000 to $60,000.
Oh my goodness, that's not even half of what they make. Not even close to half.
So that's why we have a lot of openings in our operating budget for school psychologists. And so we're always trying to recruit a school psychologist in. However, someone graduating from a university, they have one or two years of experience, they're going to make more money working for an agency than for a school department. And that's why we have unfilled positions. So it's a difficult position to actually fill.
I'm sure that the other schools have issues with it too.
Yep.
I'm glad that they're willing to come and work with us, so, nice. Okay, so we just have the last, the transfer report. Do you want to do the transfer report or do you want to do this first? Yeah, let's do the transfer report and then we'll hop to the forecast that I gave. So as I mentioned last meeting, a lot of the transfers that are in front of you, and I'd be happy to answer specific questions if there's questions on the transfers that are put forward. A lot of these are just moving some money around for year end to cover any contract services that have been over. Some of the schools still moving money to cover some of their outstanding costs that they're looking to purchase. So I guess I'll, instead of going line by line, because I feel like that wasn't beneficial last time, are there any specific questions related to the transfers that are in front of you?
I didn't have any. I looked through it and I saw that there is a bit of money moving around, but I understand why. You know, it's an ongoing issue that we've had all year. So I didn't really, do you guys have any particular questions? Okay, all right, let's do it then. I'm going to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 June transfer report.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, cool.
All right. All right, from a super high-level standpoint, so based off of the nice legal paper that I handed out this evening. So if you flip to the last page just real quick, so I'm looking from an overall, and again, snapshot in time related to the forecast. I'm forecasting that we're going to have just under $43,000 available for fiscal year 25's budget. Friendly reminder, a lot of this through June actually has been charged to the operating budget at this time. We're still paying for some invoices that are coming in. So any services potentially that happened in the month of June, we are going through and paying those. And that's why you'll see in the summer or the escrow column next to June, there are some amounts in there. So when I brought this report, and again, that's giving the benefits portion back to the city, right? So this has changed slightly by about $40,000 since last month. I've been saying it out of the gate, it's going to be a little bit of a tight year. You're not going to see, you know, millions of dollars kind of left over, considering our contract service, out of district tuition and some of our other areas, we're a little bit over budget.
So how much, how much is the city going to get back? Are they going to get that $4,037,000 back?
Yep, so I'm estimating at this time, they should receive around $4 million back. And that is a mix of what we haven't spent related to pension benefits and FICA money.
Okay. All right.
All right. If we go back to the front page, so just super high-level, out of the gate, and please, as always, stop me if there's specific questions. So the 51s, which is our salaries and wages, a little bit higher than anticipated. But again, please remember, we went ahead and moved some money out of wages into contract service lines, right? So that overall negative might look slightly off, but you got to look at the overall ending amount. We're not ending in a deficit as of right now for this fiscal year.
Will you be moving any money back into that or is it just going to remain this way?
So I've been working with the accounting team at City. Once we have everything in place, if it makes sense to move money back in, that's fine. But our ending amount at the end of our budget is not in a deficit. So from an overall standpoint, it doesn't really make sense to go ahead and do a whole bunch of budget transfers.
Okay.
Yep, good question. The next section is our 52s, which is our fringe benefits. Again, giving back about $4 million to the city. The only other item in that line is the educational assistance. We've gotten a whole bunch of requests in June. I met with the HR team yesterday. I think we have about $50,000 or so that still needs to be paid. That is why you're seeing $50,000 in the summer escrow column. So I'm anticipating they're going to utilize most of that. I would say this is probably the year that we've seen the most money spent in educational assistance. So our teachers and our staff are definitely taking, going ahead and getting additional education and taking advantage of that.
Okay.
53s, which is our professional and technical services. For the most part, with the exception of two line items at this point, I'm anticipating we have most of our expenses in. We still have a little bit of money usually that trickles in from the legal line here in the summer. You know, again, any costs that took effect in June, that's where you're seeing it in the summer escrow line. And then contract services. You know, last month was a pretty big month between contract services for special education. I've gone ahead and, I guess I would say, exhausted operating budget as much as possible for that. And then we will start to move some money over to our special revenue, special education account too. So I'm anticipating with contract services for the year, we'll probably end right around 4.5 million. Again, that's all contract services as a whole for the district, not just special education.
That's more than double than was, than we expected to spend this year, right?
That is accurate. We, as a district, again, it's everything for contract services in there, but the majority of what we went, or what we went over on is unfortunately our special education. As I talked many times this year, it's those unfilled positions that we needed to do a contract service for. We've been strategic internally to really talk about, you know, how do we move forward to make sure, A, financially, we can support it and B, we're meeting the needs of the students, which is most important. I think special ed as a whole, when this budget was first set up, there was about 1.5, 1.6 million in contract services for special education. I think we spent just for special education, close to almost $3.3 million. So drastically over.
When I saw the, when I saw the sheet for Booth B. and all of them, I was like, oh my God, this, I remember this. And when I got it last year, I added it all up and I was like, oh, wow, this is so much money. And I think we talked about it every single meeting after that, so.
I just wanted to be transparent and not sit here at the ends this month or next month and say, oh, by the way, we're drastically over and here's why. I think, you know, just to kind of plant the seed as we move forward, I think when we look at fiscal year 27, it's going to be super important, again, that we, as the district, look at contract service and tuition, out of district tuition and probably add more money there if the trend's going to continue to go up.
Okay.
I guess it's more, when we looked at the contract services for unfilled positions, and so as Mr. Gray said, we're moving, or transferring money from the salary line to contract services. And sometimes that pays for it, but oftentimes it does not. The larger conversation is we're giving back the city $4 million in benefits, right? Which is also tied to the salary lines. So we're only moving salary and not $4 million. If we transferred $4 million from wages into contract services, we would be having a different conversation. So I think we need to, you know, I think that's a future conversation with the city. How do we, again, you know, Mr. Gray is saying we have about, you know, what was it, 70? $42,000 in surplus, which is 0.02%.
Yeah, that's like saying we have three pennies left.
Right, but we also, what was unspent and we didn't touch is a $4 million line in benefits. So that's a whole different kind of conversation. So when we're transferring funds or looking for special appropriations, there is still a different way that I think we broached the conversation with the city. I think we need to think about moving forward on how much is being allocated in salary and benefits and what's other money that is allowable to transfer. In the past, we haven't been allowed to transfer benefits.
I think to Dr. Andre's point, you know, one thing that we kind of were strategizing about is probably in like September, October timeframe, we got to sit down with the city and we've already made them aware of this to say, our special education costs are rising, right? Whether it's contract service, out of district tuition, et cetera. If we continue kind of on this forecast for the next three to five years, we're gonna, we're gonna run out of money. Like, there's got to be a solution, right? So whether it's touching benefits, whether it's figuring out, do we, some other districts take all of their special education costs and it's almost on like a separate, almost like a separate budget themselves? I think we, we just need a partner, and we will, with the city to be able to say, here's what we're seeing, here's the trend, what can we do to work together so that year over year, we're, A, making sure we're coming to the table. over year, we're, A, making sure we're coming to the table with the right amount in our operating budget, right? And some of that potentially might mean, as we move forward, maybe it's bigger increases, right? In the school level budget. I get it. I see some laughter over there, but I'm being serious. At, at some point, there's, there's got to be the conversation of, what do we do? Right? Because the last thing we want is to sit here and say, we're in a deficit, millions of dollars, and here's why. We know why we're going to be there, so let's be more proactive versus reactive and partner together.
Well, you said that already, there's 100 more kids in the elementary level than we had last year, right? That are registered. So that's, it just sounds like we might have our, that our budget for next year will also be, you know, off because of that. And that's not, it's a problem not just for the school, but it is a problem also for the city, because the alderman and the mayor do value our schools. They're an important part of what makes Nashville such a great city. So, so hopefully they'll be willing to work with us. Is there any other section that you wanted to? I kind of just derailed you, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. I saw a light on and didn't want to skip over anything, so if anybody has a question, please let me know. So the next section, 54s, property services. So still getting some of the utility bills in, which is standard. For the most part, that category as a whole, we're going to spend about 98%, similar kind of trend to last year. We might have a little bit of money left over in that electricity line. It really truly is going to depend. I checked with accounts payable today. We had most of the invoices, but not all of them in yet. So again, this is a snapshot in time, when we come forward in August, there might be, you know, whatever that final number was, I, it might be a little bit higher.
Yep. Cool.
I just have a question about that, just to maybe update the public. How's everything going with all the solar panels that we've put in to save on the electricity and the different kickbacks that go into that in 54? So how is that working? A little update.
Yeah. I think we're not seeing as much of a solar panel credit yet at this point. I think based on talking to Mr. Smith and the team, it's benefiting us some, but not drastically. I know myself have solar panels at home. We just implemented them not too long ago, and I think what we're seeing and what the schools are seeing is, it does take a little bit of time for some of that to get kicked back. But we're seeing a little bit of a reduction, but not a drastic reduction quite yet. So hopefully that will continue. All right. 55s, which is our other services as a whole. This is the section where regular transportation, special education transportation is in, plus our tuition out of district. So I'll just call out real quick, transportation as a whole, slightly over budget related to the special education transportation, but luckily, we had a little bit of money left over in regular transportation, so those kind of offset each other. Just remember, special education transportation services is not only for student and our students that take first student buses, but these could be some of our McKinney-Vento students. Unfortunately, some of those kiddos that are displaced at this time. So I'm not too surprised to see that being over, but again, we had some money left over in regular transportation. This is the other area we've talked about all year long, so 55, 694, tuition out of district. So when we originally built this budget, I say "we," my predecessor, but it's "we" now, because I'm here, we originally budgeted, I think it was about $6.2 million is what the start of the budget was. As you can see, I'm anticipating will be just over $7 million. We're actually, from a forecast standpoint, I'm looking closer to 7.1, 7.2 million for tuition out of district. So again, we've supported that cost in the operating budget as much as possible. But if the folks remember, we just went, or last month and then last week, just finished going through the process of accepting some additional funds in special revenue to be able to use for some of these costs related to special education. So the rest of the cost will be putting over to the special revenue account related to special education.
Okay.
61s, supplies and materials, as I flip my page, no huge surprises there, just under 100% spent. Again, these are really our supplies, our materials, books, subscriptions, et cetera. Nothing really to call out in those lines. 68, which is our other expenses, so these are our indirect costs. Again, it's in there as a negative, because it's a revenue related to the federal grants. We are, thankfully, kudos to actually our district accountant, we are pretty much caught up with billing most of our federal grants through the month of June. And that's credit to her work for sure. So I'm anticipating we're actually going to get a little bit more than what we budgeted, which is great, in those indirect costs from the federal grants. The next section, 71s, your equipment. So spending just about 100%, 95, 96% is what I'm anticipating at this time. Again, this is all your computer equipment, computer software, et cetera. We do have some things that are still sitting in that encumbrance bucket, so we must be just waiting for a few things to come in, or a few items to be finally paid for. The last item, just to jump to all the way at the end, so the 90s, budget adjustments. So that line item there is related to our facility rentals and related to our athletics fees. So we're anticipating about $300,000 coming in from those two teams. We're, I think we're actually going to be slightly lower. The facility rentals weren't as high as what we anticipated. I think they're lower by maybe $8,000 or so. So once we do that transfer, it might be slightly lower, but nothing to be concerned about.
Okay.
So that's the overall update. Again, in August, we'll kind of do a final, at a snapshot in time, to say, where did we truly end fiscal year 2025?
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, thank you for all your hard work. I mean, it's been a crazy year.
Yes, thank you. It's been a fire hose, but it's been a, it's been good. It sets us up for success in the future. I'll continue to be transparent and, you know, we'll continue to have the conversations that we need to either move some of that benefit money, have higher budget years from a percentage standpoint. And I'll continue to push back and say, well, why is that costing what it's costing? Do we truly need it? What, what are we doing to support the students? So, happy to be here.
Excellent. Okay. So you guys all, any questions, anything else you want to ask or bring up or anything?
Just, thanks for getting the contracts done. So that'll make budgeting a little bit, like, projections be a little bit easier, I would guess.
Yes, absolutely.
Great to you. And Dr. Andre, yeah, that's, you're right.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. So do you have anything else you want to? Okay. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we're adjourned at 7:02.